All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And clerk, please call the roll.
On his way.
Yeah, he'll be here in two minutes.
Dean's here.
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 Lewis?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Chester.
All right, very good. All right, everybody's got their packet consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 11th meeting and the accounts payable.
So moved.
All right. Second, please.
Second.
All right, motion by Gardner and second by Dean. Any questions on either of the minutes or the accounts payable? If not?
I think I actually had a question, which there's legal fees regarding employment for $12,644. Can you get back to me on that?
I will.
Thank you.
Yes.
That's all.
All right.
And I'm mayor.
Great. Anybody else? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
All right, you have all the staff reports in the packet, city manager, treasurer, planning and zoning, DPW, and engineer. Any questions on any of those reports?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, point of order, please. For questions that are related to the comments, do you prefer that those to be addressed during council comments or itemize those as we, because I've got several comments on some of the reports.
It's fine, go ahead.
I would like to approach it.
Go ahead and address it.
Okay. First thing, I didn't, I haven't seen that where we stand on the AT&T cellular. I think that's probably in negotiation, didn't see that in the reports, just more of an FYI. Also, two more question regarding, there was a report about working out the interior of City Hall, which is great. I'm wondering, a couple of questions. One is, what's the plan going to be to take care of the outside of the building? Number two is, one question about the information booth. Is the information booth in pretty bad shape? Some, I don't know, but some of the feta is dry rotted. It could really use some attention. Does that the city's responsibility or does that belong to someone else?
I think the information booth is ours.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I do believe it is, yeah.
Okay. It could really, yeah, it could really use some attention. So I just would like to see some feedback in terms of when the city is going to be looking at getting the City Hall painted, as well as work some done, work, some work needs to be done on the information. So.
Okay.
Then, planning and zoning, just wanted to bring the council up to speed at our meeting from last Thursday. We had a.
A bit under planning and board reports, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll do that.
Anybody else? Did want to point out the fish stocking in the river. It's pretty, it's pretty nifty if you haven't been down there to see it. It's really very cool, so a really neat venture. Also, the public arts, Mary Jo Lemansky and her work with the city, that's fantastic, generous, to say the least. And then, the pavement management plan, I really like. And I know, I don't know if Scott's on, but that's, that's pretty cool, so.
Yeah, that's going to be coming up pretty soon here.
That's nifty.
I'm here. I'm here.
Good job, Scott, on the pavement management plan. I like it.
Yeah, I, mayor, I would just like to agree with you on the pavement management plan that's coming. And I also am grateful and want to acknowledge the anonymous donor who's committed to funding restoration and maintenance of existing public art. And between that and the SCA, those are really some big dollar donations to move us forward in public art. Thankful.
Very good. Lieutenant Enstfield, you have anything you'd like to report? No? All good. All right, excellent. Okay, with that, I'm not aware of any agenda changes, no guest speakers. So at this point, we'll get to public comment on agenda items only, but I'll make exception. We have our county commissioner, Dean Cappinga, here, and then another. So, how are you? I've seen you everywhere.
Great seeing you. Just some new things that have happened within the county. I don't know if you've heard of this new PFN system for dispatch. I'm on the 911, I chair that forward. But, you know, I think that Lieutenant would just tell you all the things that dispatch does. And this new PFN system is a new fiber network that gives us full two-way texting. It gives us a location accuracy as far as, much better than what it was. Has disaster recovery. So let's say if all the phones go on elegant, we can transfer all the phones to a different PFN to take care of all of our calls. You know, something went down with an elegant. So it's just a big step up from what we had before. Also, just to mention to you, I was at another meeting at the road commission. I know the director just mentioned that he did get a five ma, he didn't get it. He put in for a $5 million grant for the road on Lakeshore, you know, in front of all the houses, you know, that plan that they have. He thinks there's a good chance they'll get it. So I'm looking forward to seeing, it'd be great if they didn't get it. We'll see what happens. Also, just to know that Fenville came up with an ordinance for their ORVs. And then, the four township south of it opened up their areas except for the main roads so that people can get with their golf carts, with their ORVs, to Fenville for coffee. They can get all the way into South Haven. We also have that same issue with Hopkins, and is it Door? They both have it, you know, something like that, just for information to know it. I was also on another meeting today in Lansing, just for Health and Human Services. They had something really interesting. They had a group come to us with eMed. It was just a testing kit for COVID. And on the testing kit, you'd put your phone on it, and you could actually, it was an app that opened up. And then, as far as the issue that people are having with getting, like the ivermectins, all the different antibodies, this gets you to within two days. So check you out. It's a positive test that gets you to the medications you need much faster than we've had in the past. So let's go into the governor, hopefully in the next week or so, but we passed it within our committee. Just for your permission.
Okay.
And that's all I have. But thanks for giving me your time.
All right. Anything for the county commissioner?
Yes. Russ Gardner, Sagatuck City Council, thanks for being here, Commissioner. The project down at, what I refer to as the washout, that Lakeshore Drive. You mentioned that there's a county plan, maybe for the public that are not aware of what that plan is. Could you just briefly explain what they're looking at?
They are. They thought that it would cost so much money to replace that road or try to sustain it, that a lot of it is simply big trucks going down it and shaking it, and they're losing more ground as they go. So there's a plan in place to put a road in front of it, you know, on the east side of all those houses. Now, that's the plan, and they have buy-in of all those residences along there.
Good.
You know, so that's what this grant would be for, as far as to put a road in in front of it. Get rid of all that traffic that's really crowding that hillside, one of the main causes of it. And it's simply too dangerous for the cars that are there.
So that would eventually connect it so people could drive, literally, they bypass the old road, obviously, but have a direct connection on the old Lakeshore Drive.
Correct.
Nice.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stan. Great to see you. All right, next up, we have George Lucas, who's a candidate on the Republican ticket for House District 38.
Good evening. I'm George Lucas, and I'm running for state representative in the 38th district in the Republican primary. For the past 23 years, I've been a real estate broker, which has given me a deep understanding of our area. I understand the opportunities and the challenges of southwestern Michigan, and I have a few thoughts on how to move things forward. I'm running for state representative because I know that I can make a positive difference for our community. As a small businessman, I have successfully negotiated hundreds of deals for my clients. I've been very active in my community, and I served, have served as president for two nonprofit organizations, Chickaming Open Lands and the Southwestern Michigan Association of Realtors, where I demonstrated a high level of leadership and a proven ability to get things done. Negotiating skills, leadership, and follow-through. In my opinion, these are three characteristics that somebody needs to have if they're going to be an effective legislator. My primary objective is to grow the population and the Michigan, and the economy of Michigan. And with that, I would like to work for lower taxes, less regulation, improving high-speed internet access, particularly in the more rural areas, and expanding vocational and technical training in our schools so the non-college-bound kids are work-ready.
Personality and oratorical skills to win the election.
Ken, that's Ken, just. Ken, mute yourself, please.
Jamie, sorry about that.
I offer a lifetime of experience. I offer calm, confident leadership. I have the experience and the skills to be the voice for the cities, small towns, rural areas of southwestern Michigan, and I look forward to earning your vote. I'd like to thank you very much for your time this evening, and I look forward to learning more about the city of Sagatuck. It's great to be here. Thank you very much.
Thanks for taking the time. Thank you. Anybody else in the audience would like to address council at this time on agenda items? If so, come on up, introduce yourself, let us know your jurisdiction of residence.
Ann Fox, city of Sagatuck. My periodic report on fire board meeting, this one from the meeting on April 18th, fairly brief. Kind of in order, we approved $364,000 roughly of expenditures for the time period. We heard Sherry Tidal, Tidaldi, who I think many of you may know, who addressed us on some initiatives. She's doing her best to push forward related to affordable housing, particularly as it relates to the first responders in the area, most of which are priced out of anything reasonable. I mean, we have first, primary first responders, people who make lots of calls coming from as far north as north of Holland, which obviously adds time. She had some good ideas. She has, she's a mortgage broker experienced person, and some of her ideas in that area. Purely as an aside, the, part of the new master plan being developed or soon to be developed for the city and the township, and perhaps for Douglas as well. I know affordable housing is going to rank very high on the list of priorities to get addressed in that area because it's, it's not just first, certainly first responders, but just workers in general. We went through the, I don't know if you did, did you not receive the incident reports that are normally part of?
No, no report from the chief.
You talked to Chris Mantle, or?
No report from the chief.
Okay, Chris would be the one. I'll speak to him and see if, get it, get it to him. There's nothing particularly remarkable, by the way, in those reports. We approved, I mentioned this the last time I was up here, we had a request from Spartan Fire Equipment regarding a $58 or $5900 increase in pricing they had on a chassis and fire truck that's in, ordered with a guaranteed pricing by the, by the fire district. They were requesting help with that cost increase that had been given to them by their suppliers. We approved a third of that number from the fire district, primarily to retain, to retain good relationships with Spartan because it's not the last fire truck we're going to need, and that's who we're going to go to. That's, you don't have a lot of choices in Michigan. And then, we, we approved a letter, which you may have seen, that went to the commercial record regarding Douglas's security provisions surrounding their recent Easter parade.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Glenn.
Good evening, one of the young Sagatuck residents. I would like to speak to agenda item 12F, the Pride Crosswalk Painting. You should have received a letter from me stating my support for this project. I won't review that, what I said there, because I wish to comment on some cautions outlined in the packet regarding crosswalk painting. When I receive council meeting notices, I always scan the agenda and read any attachments that are pertinent to the items I'm interested in. I will say that I paused when I read the item report for this agenda item. I would not want to, not want the city to endorse violating any Michigan Uniform Traffic Control Device standards or prohibitions from the Federal Highway Administration. So I did what I always do when I have concerns or questions, more research. I found that while the Federal Highway Administration does not explicitly prohibit crosswalk art, of which rainbow painted crosswalks are an example, they have recommended that municipalities refrain from this practice due to safety concerns. But urban planning practitioners and advocates say that the government's claims that crosswalks are, makes intersections less safe, are not rooted in evidence. In fact, when asked for evidence that colorful pavement markings within a crosswalk have an impact on safety, the Federal Highway Administration was unable to provide any research. In 2013, they, they, that same organization also issued a memo on this topic where they do clarify that colored pavement for purely aesthetic treatment is allowed, which I believe is what this crosswalk would be. And luckily for us, just this month, this asphalt art, asphalt art safety study was released. They undertook the study because of the absence of rigorous evaluation or published literature on safety performance of asphalt art projects. In the intro, they state, "The study was conducted to address the need for impact analyses by comparing crash rates and real-time behavior of pedestrians and motorists at an array of asphalt art sites before and after the projects were installed." And here's what they found. There was a 50% decrease in the rate of crashes involving pedestrians or other vulnerable road users. There was a 37% decrease in the rate of crashes leading to injuries, and a 17% decrease in the total crash rate. On the observational behavior assessments they did, there was a 25% decrease in pedestrian crossing, crossings involving a conflict with drivers, a 27% increase in the frequencies of drivers immediately yielding to pedestrians in the right of way, and a 38% decrease in pedestrian crossing against the walk signal. So, they concluded, last and perhaps the most important of this study, with a rigorous analysis of nearly two dozen projects across the country, provide supporting quantitative data for residents and the city officials to use to implement asphalt projects in their communities. So therefore, any concerns I had are completely gone, and I look forward to seeing that rainbow colored crosswalk on my daily walk downtown.
Thank you.
Anybody else here in the audience? Anybody online? Madam Clerk? Anybody online that would like to address council? If so, please raise your hand, introduce yourself, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
No race fans.
All right, not seeing anyone. There will be an opportunity for public comment at the end of the meeting again. All right, with that, we'll move, there are no introduction of ordinances, no public hearings, no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. I'll just remind folks that Wednesday, we had our workshop, and we had quite a good and lengthy discussion about all these items. So for some folks online, it might feel like we're speeding through these, but we've had quite a good discussion on it on Wednesday already. That was an open meeting, a public meeting, and that recording is online at the city of Sagatuck page. So with that, we'll start with the first one, special event, Venetian Festival. Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, this is on page 17 of your packet. I'm going to go straight to the motion. Recommended motion is to approve the Venetian Festival to take place from July 29th through the 2031st, 2022, organized by the Cow Hill Yacht Club.
All right, entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'm going to say exactly what he just said. Motion to approve the Venetian Festival to take place from July 29th through July 20, or excuse me, July 31st, 2022, organized by the Cow Hill Yacht Club.
All right.
Secondly.
Leo?
Motion by Stanton, second by Leo. Any discussion from council?
Madam Mayor, I would just, I want to thank Jeff Slayer and Corky Oya, and I don't know the name of the third person that was here from Cow Hill for their presentation. They did an excellent job in putting this event together.
Nancy, yeah.
So Nancy, what was her last name?
In the application.
Nancy. Nancy. So I just want to thank the three that were here on Wednesday and helped walk us through their plan. So, thank you.
Very good. Any other comments from council?
Looking forward to seeing Star Farm again in July.
Lots of fun, lots of fun. All right, if no other comments, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Anyone opposed? All right. Next up, we have Waterfront Invitational Fine Art Crafts, Art and Craft Fair. Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, this item is on page 30 of your packet. I'm going to jump straight to the motion. The motion is, recommended motion is to approve the Waterfront Invitational Fine Art and Craft Fair to take place on July 2nd and July 31st, organized by the Sagatuck Douglas Art Club.
Motion from council, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the Waterfront Invitational Fine Art Craft Fair to take place in July 2nd and July 31st, organized by the Sagatuck Douglas Art Club.
Second?
All right, motion by Gardner, second by Stanton. Any discussion or comments from council? If not, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, moving on, motion passes. Next up, Community Pride Car Parade. Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, this is on page 44 of your packet. Recommended motion from staff is to approve the Community Pride Parade, Car Parade, to take place on June 4th.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Community Pride Car Parade to take place on June 4th.
All right. Second, anyone?
I'll second.
All right, motion by Leo and second by Dean. Any comments, questions, or discussion? This is all, go ahead.
Yeah. Sorry, I missed a meeting. The question is, will Butler Street be completely closed down for that hour? I kind of missed the details. And it was kind of sketchy in the original presentation.
And you'll see in Brett's comments, Lieutenant Enstfield, sorry, LT, I rather informal, my bad. He refers to in the past, just not typically shutting down the intersections because it would take too many resources. Basically, the busiest intersection would be up there on Blue Star Highway, and that's it. But that, that moves through there. Would you have anything to add?
No, I mean, I have a little car, and most people stop and wait to, you know, a car parade like that.
Yep.
My experience.
And we will have an officer helping out at that intersection. Correct. Yeah. Great. Awesome, thank you.
All right. And as I saw from the fire chief, he also agreed that they'd assist other agencies in protecting the public. All right? Anybody else? Comments or questions?
There goes.
All right, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. Next up, we have the Alton County Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Service Agreement.
Madam Mayor, this is on page 52 of your packet. You had a lengthy discussion at your workshop. So with our sample motion, we're just going to hit the highlights. What we'd like to see happen, we, meaning staff, is to let us work through the details and just to approve the highlights of the contract. So, so the recommended motion would be allow, to allow staff, legal counsel, and insurance to negotiate the final terms of the continued contract with Allegan County Sheriff's Department, and authorize the mayor and/or mayor pro tem to execute the contract with the following understandings. And these are the highlights. Fees not to exceed, exceed 3% annually. Police vehicles to be acquired, but in partnership with Allegan County Sheriff's Department Fleet Manager, and the branding of the vehicles to keep the city of Sagatuck on, on the vehicle decal.
All right. I will entertain a motion.
Well, okay.
Very cool.
Good luck to you.
Motion to allow staff, legal counsel, and insurance to negotiate final terms of the continued contract with Allegan County Sheriff's Department and authorize the mayor or mayor pro tem to execute contract with the following understandings. Fees to not exceed 3% annually. Police vehicles to be acquired in partnership with Allegan County Fleet Management and city of Sagatuck branding of vehicles continue.
Very good. Second, please.
Second.
All right, motion by Stanton and second by Gardner. Discussion.
So with the branding of the vehicles, will it say Allegan County Sheriff's Department, and then a portion that says, what was the freezing that was used?
On our existing vehicles?
So it's not going to change? Sorry.
Help me out, LT.
That was with, when we had the?
Yeah.
And if you could come up to the mic.
Yeah, so I can hear.
Typically, the, we can come back right now, there's one hardship right now, and they don't request it. So typically, what probably would happen to be is, like serving Sagatuck across, like, the back doors kind of way it is now, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I would, and I don't know what the conversations have been between the county and the city, but I would imagine that your current vehicles are going to be several years pushed out. So I mean, they're in good shape and good vehicles, so.
Good.
All right.
This is probably future, so I'll probably retire.
Is that you're hoping to be retired?
Eventually.
Other questions or items for discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Second?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, next up, we have Resolution 220425-A, Pride Crosswalk Painting. Mr. Manager?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is on page 60. You had a lengthy discussion about this item at your workshop. Our recommended motion is to authorize the painting of the crosswalk in front of Sagatuck City Hall, crossing Butler Street, in recognition of LGBTQ community. That is our motion.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, may I make a motion? Motion to approve Resolution Number 220425-A to authorize the painting of the crosswalks in front of Sagatuck City Hall, crossing Butler Street, in recognition of the LGBTQ community.
All right, second, please.
I'll second, Mayor.
All right. Motion by Leo, second by Dean. Discussion.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'm in support of this resolution. I have one correction to the, to the second, whereas it has an extra the in it. And then, too, is, I just want to make sure that it's clear for the public that may be listening, is the resolution is written in such a way that the crosswalk will be the crosswalk leading across Butler to City Hall, and not as an exhibit A that's in the packet, which is showing a four different crosswalks being painted together. So, just point of clarification for the public that this is a single crosswalk crossing Butler.
That is not true. This is the four, four crosswalks, two of which will be able to be completed right away. This, this one here, crossing Butler here, the one over there on Culver. The other two will wait until the construction is done. It's a four square. It's a square.
Then, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, the resolution as it's written does not support that.
Madam Mayor, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, for clarification on the motion, which would need to be amended at this point, it does just call for a single crosswalk, and I'm pointing, so, I'm so bad with directions. So, going across Butler Street. So if the, if the council would like to see all four intersections done, they should interject that in the motion. But I would recommend holding off on the intersection in the construction zone. So, we still have some construction going out of the Butler Restaurant. So anything that would cross that path, I would say we'd get back to that after the construction's finished. If you want to do all four cross, at the whole intersection.
All right, so I can help with that. We'll need to have a motion to amend this motion to include the four crosswalks with the two to completed when construction is.
Yes, Mayor, I would make a motion to amend the Resolution 220425A to authorize the painting of the crosswalks, plural, four square, in front of Sagatuck City Hall, crossing Butler and Culver Streets, in recognition of LGBTQ community.
No, I'll second that amendment.
All right.
To the motion.
Motion by Leo and second by Dean to amend the motion and the resolution to include the four crosswalks. All right, other discussion?
Yeah, I do want to bring into question, or not bring into question, but just bring into discussion the email I sent to council earlier today regarding some options. regarding some options to, I think, make a bigger impact for this painting of the crosswalks and placing the crosswalk, painted crosswalks at different locations throughout the town to better impact people coming into town, as well as, I just think that make a bolder, more impactful project.
Certainly welcome to make that motion after this one, if you want.
So any thoughts?
Well, I guess my thoughts are, you know, staff put together a recommendation. It was discussed at the last workshop. There's been a lot of community feedback. I've been keeping tabs. I've seen sixteen letters in support of what was proposed at the, at the workshop. I've only seen one against it, and that was from an anonymous email that was a random name and a string of numbers. So I have no idea if that's even a constituent. But the constituents that, whose letters I've read and are very powerful to me show that they are very much in favor of what was put before the council almost a week ago. The DPW director said he could accommodate that. So for that reason, I think the only street light in town is a pretty impactful location right next to City Hall, so I'm in favor.
Other discussion or comments? All right, with that, we have a motion on the table. Motion by Leo and second by Dean to amend this motion to include all four crosswalks. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Stanton. Yes.
If I may, I'm just gonna use the mayor privilege real quick to just read a, a statement, if you don't mind. "I'm delighted to see the Pride Crosswalk concept finally approved. A special thank you to former council member Jeff Spangler, who lobbied for a Pride crosswalk several years ago. At that time, I think it was twenty nineteen, city council chose to place a Pride sidewalk between Scooters and the SCA. Since that sidewalk appeared, it has brought me delight to see children and adults alike stopping to take pictures there, no matter what time of the year it is. What we all know is that as a community, the city of Sagatuck has long accepted LGBTQ plus resident and guest dollars at their businesses and lodging establishments. However, the location of the Pride sidewalk also felt like a continued marginalization of the LGBTQ plus community. As a member of that community, I can say it felt that way. Basically, we see you, but we're going to place you over here where it's not so obvious. Now, with this very overt placement of the Pride crosswalks, we're saying welcome and thank you. We appreciate your continued presence and support, and thank you for making Sagatuck the vibrant and inclusive city that we all know it is. But even more importantly, with all the hate directed still at the LGBTQ plus community here in Michigan and in the United States, we're saying that no matter who you are and what your age, you are safe here. In closing, the Pride crosswalks will serve as a permanent reminder to residents and visitors alike in recognizing that Sagatuck is a welcoming place for all people and a city, is a city that openly and unabashedly celebrates its place in LGBTQ plus history in Michigan. I thank my council colleagues for finally getting this done." All right, that, move on. All right, next up, we have Resolution two-two-zero-four-two-five-b, Schedule of Fees Amendment. Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, this is on page sixty-seven. I'm gonna jump straight to the motion. Motion to approve Resolution, recommended motion to approve Resolution number two-two-zero-four-two-five-b as presented approving a change in the city's schedule of fees effective June first, twenty twenty-two.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I can do it. All right, motion to approve Resolution number two-two-zero-four-two-five-b as presented approving a change in the city's schedule of fees effective June first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All right, motion by Stanton, second by Gardner. Any discussion or questions?
Madam Mayor, no, no questions, but I think it would be important for an explanation of the reason for this resolution and increase in fees, which was discussed at length at the workshop, for the public that may be listening and the news reporters who may be listening to the call, to explain why we're going forward with this. There is solid reasoning behind it, in my opinion.
Sure, Mr. Manager, you want to?
Madam Mayor, if you, if you'd like to, or we can turn, turn to Cindy Osmond who's on the call.
Hi Cindy, wanna fill us in on this?
Sure, thank you, Miss Mayor. The tri-community area has always tried to keep their rental inspection programs pretty much aligned. It helps the fire department do their work. It helps people that have properties in different locations. And this is not something that we, is a revenue generator for the city. It covers our costs for the inspections, the re-inspections, and the administrative paperwork that goes into it as well. And it's a fee increase for the rental inspection, three-year rental inspection certificate from two-hundred-and-fifty dollars to three-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
All right, thanks Cindy.
I think, Mayor, just, just to, just to reemphasize what Cindy said, this, this was also discussed at length at the workshop, and it's, it was in both the workshop packet and in tonight's packet under the description. It's quite clearly laid out the rationale for, for this, this, this increase.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Let's see, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Second.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Stan.
Yes.
All right, last up, we have revocable license for temporary sidewalk restaurant seating at Tumpin Nichols. Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, this is on page seventy-one of your packet. Recommended motion by staff is to approve the revocable license agreement for temporary outside restaurant seating in the public right of way for Cadwell and Cadwell LLC DBA.
And I'll just add that this was done in twenty fifteen as well. Cindy, you wanna add anything with this?
No, this is just pretty much as it appears. There are other ones that do it are Grow, Local Burrito, Scooters, and Wicks.
Great. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Wally.
Wally, Sid. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve the revocable license agreement for temporary outside restaurant seating in the public right of way for Caldwell and Caldwell LLC DBA.
Second, anybody?
I'll roll.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Stanton.
Rookie.
Second by Leo. We're gonna start pulling teeth here pretty soon. Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, just more of an update for those that weren't at the workshop on Wednesday. There was extensive discussion about this revocable license process, and the council that was present, I think, has agreed to direct the city staff to begin looking at this as a permit process as opposed to a revocable license, which will make it more administratively easier to deal with this. That proposal has not come back to the council for consideration, but I think that's another way in which we're looking to have this process be more efficient, more effective for our business owners. Permits make sense to be as opposed to a revocable license, which requires direct action every year.
I just like seeing those tables out there. It's so nice, even when it's this cold and there's people bundled up trying to enjoy those spots. So I'm glad they're out there and hardy restaurant owners that are taking those on.
That's a nice spot for it.
Yeah.
There is around, I think, a bench there that looks like it's permanent. We may want to keep an eye on the removal of that.
Did they remove it, or does it stay there?
Well, I think a lot of times they can remove them in the winter, but the found, the brackets still stay because they bolted in. You know, you know, or no other problem, just close by happened. Just might want to check that or have Scott check it.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Anything else? Any other discussion or questions? All right, with that, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, with that, we've arrived at public comment. Please feel free, if anybody's in the audience who want to come forward and address council, please introduce yourself. Limit your comment to three minutes, please. Anybody online?
No.
Looks like maybe somebody. Camera just went on.
Looks like Lauren.
Lauren.
I don't see a hand.
She's waving, she's waving.
Hi Lauren, do you wanna say anything, or are you just waving?
Is this comment for the crosswalk?
You could, yes, this is a public comment on anything you want. So please introduce yourself and tell us where you're from and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Yes, ma'am. Lauren Flanagan, property owner in Sagatuck and own three businesses in Douglas-Fenville-Sagatuck area. I am strongly in favor of symbols for inclusion for our community, for all peoples. And since we have a reputation for being very gay-friendly community, which is a large segment of our population who visits and lives here, I am strongly in favor of having the crosswalk, the rainbow crosswalk by the city hall or nearby or multiple locations, so that everybody comes, feels welcome. And the economic benefit to this is multifaceted. One, increased tourism and visitors is kind of a rising tide that floats all boats for our businesses. And it also increases a very urgent need for our community, which is to increase the number of permanent residents. When people feel welcome, they're more inclined to consider to stay and live. And particularly in this time of, you know, work-from-home, remote kind of operations, I think it would be a real win. And if we have a larger population here, it would be very beneficial to our tax base and our economies. So I strongly urge that we do everything we can to have symbols of inclusion, including the rainbow crosswalk and the flag at City Hall. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. All right, I see Marcia, you have your hand up?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Marcia Casper, City of Sagatuck resident. And I just wanted to thank the council for passing the LGBTQ crosswalks at City Hall. And I echo Lauren's comments, all of them. And I also want to say thank you, Mayor Lewis, for your comments regarding this and Jeff Spangler in the past for getting, getting this going. Eventually, you know, it passed, and I am thankful for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcia. Anybody else?
Randy Walker.
Hi Randy.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
And my dog barking in the background, sorry. I just also want to thank the council. I'm a Douglas resident, but I frequent Sagatuck significantly. And, you know, Sagatuck is a very special place to us. Excuse me, one second. We want to thank the council for passing, I, the, the crosswalk. I know for some people that it seems insignificant. As a, as a business owner, newer business owner in downtown Douglas, I can't tell you how many times people, especially younger people, will come into our store. We, we, we fly a pride flag in front of our store, and so many young people in particular come in and say, we didn't know, like, we knew it was kind of gay-friendly, but we didn't know how much so, and this is really important to us. And so I think that especially right in front of City Hall, it is a, a beautiful display of support, and I thank you as a member of the community. And, you know, just, it's a, it's a, as also a member of the Planning Committee on Community Pride, you know, our group was always looking for any little thing that we can do. So thank you, thank you, thank you. It does, it, it may seem simple, but it is significant. So thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Thank you.
I will say thank you. Thank you for listening to me and my data. And now I am excited to walk down here and see the crosswalk, but I didn't even know I was gonna be four times more excited.
Thank you. All right, anybody else that doesn't have their hands up? All right, very good. Thanks, everybody. With that, you all have received the numerous emails that we received throughout the last couple of days. With that, we'll move to boards, commissions, and committee reports. Mr. Becken? Anything?
Yeah, passed out. I think everyone received the, the packet from our last Cal Lake meeting. We didn't have anything real, you know, critical going on, just kind of normal operational stuff. But I'm glad to answer any, any questions. We bought a new backhoe. That was about the most exciting.
That's big news.
They're expensive now, though. Well, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. For what used to be looked at as a garden piece of farm equipment.
All right, Wally, anything?
Still waiting anxiously. Yeah, there's some personnel changes at M.D.O.T., some folks getting up to speed and so.
All right.
Waiting any day.
All right, Lauren?
Yeah, Historic District Commission meets next Thursday, so not this coming Thursday, but the following Thursday.
Okay, got it. Russ?
Yes, thank you. Couple items. One is Planning Commission. Our zoning administrator did a nice write-up in her notes regarding a meeting that we had this past Thursday, and the sole item of discussion was a request to amend the conditions for the special land use permit, which was, which was issued in March for Wick's Park Bar and Grill. Couple things that, if you want to really see how this works, watch the tape. We went into closed session with the city attorney to discuss a legal opinion on the condition changes. We have met with the applicant on at least four occasions in public open discussion regarding coming to a, what we think is a reasonable solution to the request, which I think we did. The two things that, one is the Planning Commission was in an area that have not, they have not been to, they have not had to address in the past. And that's putting a condition on a special land use related to occupancy. Two was, I just want to thank Chris Patterson, who was on the meeting. I, that was my most extended conversation with, with Chris to this point. I think we should be very proud and happy of his skill and expertise in this area. He gave us very sound advice. Also want to thank the planning commissioners who did a fantastic job. It was a very long evening, about a ninety-minute private session with the attorney. That meant the people that were here had to stand outside. Fortunately, it was warm, but it did not make for a happy crowd when they came back in. But I just want to say I'm very humbled and proud to be a part of that planning commission, and you should be too, for the people that are working hard to meet the needs of our businesses as well as our zones, zoning code. Two is that we also, the Ballhead Work Group will be coming back with an update on the fourth workshop, May fourth workshops. We'd like to add that to the agenda. So, thank you.
Nothing to nightmare. All right. The Tri-Community Recycling Committee met. We're actually meeting every two weeks now. We have that recycling audit that we're a part of. So we meet every second Thursday at noon with the folks with the recycling partnership. And we should be getting a press release out soon, as soon as we have our URL, phone number, and an email for a point of contact. So that's moving right along. Household Hazardous Waste Day filling up quickly. So we'll keep trying to get the word out about that. But May twenty-fourth is when that is occurring. Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to add one, one, one thing. It's kind of related to Cal Lake, but I don't know if I'm wearing my Cal Lake hat or my city council hat, you know, right now, but personal testaments are always good when you, you get to witness them yourself. Saturday morning about eight o'clock, they were in front of my house. The contractor was actually starting to board the new service line from the new main under the road into a pit that has, you know, Campbell Road, there's like border pits everywhere.
Yeah.
They've dug up all this. But all of a sudden, I could see them, something going on, so I walked out there and they said they nicked the water, they, they nicked, they thought the main. There was obviously water running, gushing out. The reason, so I just sat back, I said, oh, you know, they said, well, we can't take Cal. Yep, they're on the way. Saturday morning, eight o'clock, within fifteen minutes, two people were there with the truck, with the Vector truck. And within half hour, they had repaired a live, active water main. That was pretty impressive work. Wet and dirty, but, so shout out, you know. Uh, but, uh, so shout out, you know, give kudos to, to, uh, Cal Lake, the staff out there. Again, something, it's kind of like you get comments about first responders. You don't really appreciate it sometimes until you, it's close to home or something you witnessed. Just thought I'd bring that to the council's attention. It's pretty impressive work.
All right, uh, council comments. Anybody have anything to add?
I can go around the table or?
Anybody?
Show of hands, show of hands. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple things. One is, uh, kind of on the waterfront, not waterfront, but on the waterfront. Mildred Peterson Pond, um, and this is just more edification for me personally, is that I was there Saturday morning and it was, it was definitely at the, and it's not really a burn per se, but there's a spit of land that has a small bridge on it and a water control device. It was very high on Saturday. Um, and then yesterday, it was, I've never seen it quite that low. So just more of a question of who actually is that maintained by the city? I know, I think Scott's still on there. Is that main, is that maintained by the city? Is it Cal Lake? Who actually, is it the Petersons? Who actually, is it Eric?
It's Petersons.
Okay.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's been raised with the manager.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I'm not trying to create an issue here. I just more curiosity beyond, because I was walking with some other people that said, hey, what's going on here? And I said, yeah, I'll ask some questions, so, um, and, and it's not a concern, just more of an observation.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, happy to respond in an email to all of council rather than try to explain the complexities and the history of Petersons preserve at this moment.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Also too, I just, I do want to take responsibility for an email that I sent earlier today to council and city staff regarding the painted crosswalks resolution. I did so in the interest of sharing information for council to consider for discussion this evening. There was no intent to violate any, uh, Open Meeting Act. And our attorney, Chris Patterson, actually had a very clear directive for me in terms of how to handle that going forward. So I just want to thank him. And I want to take responsibility if it made any council members uncomfortable with that communication. That was not the intent.
Madam Mayor, if I could, yes. Um, so you, you did not violate an Open Meetings Act, um, but you were close. And, and you're only close because, uh, when you send out an email to all of council, uh, you, you kind of leave it open to having council members respond. And so that's just always like a dangerous territory, uh, to, to be in. And so, um, just in case other council members didn't see the communication today, um, the, the advice of the attorney, and my advice is the same, is that if you want to communicate with council, either send to Jamie or to myself, and then we will push out that communication. That just cuts out the possibility of other council members responding, um, and then we don't break the law. So that's cool. That's just a piece of advice. So no, no law's broken, um, but just kind of general guidance, no matter where you are in the, in the country.
Yeah, if I, if I may, following up on that, you know, Chris Patterson, when he did the training with us, did talk and touch on OMA and the possibility of violating OMA with email. So that, and then for any of us who've been through any of the MML trainings, they have highlighted this every single time. So it's, it's a universal thing that happens. It's not just unique here. But it's, it's that real fine line now with, um, social media, email, any, any ways of communication. And we just have to be really careful that we are communicating, communicating in a way that is open to the public, so they are aware of what's happening. It's the sunshine law and it applies to all of us. And it's just, it's always important to remember that. So. And that not, it doesn't just apply to us. That imply, it applies to all of our boards and commissions as well, and any appointed members in addition to elected members. And.
And all state agencies.
Everybody, everybody.
Not, not only state agencies, but someday, someday over coffee, I'd be happy to tell any one of you the, the story of when I worked for a multinational company with eighty thousand employees, how our reply all-chain circled the globe multiple times over the, over the course of a few days and basically shut down our IT system for, for an extended period of time.
Indeed. Um, real quickly, under mayor comments, um, the Butler Street paving looks really good.
Yeah, we got lots of compliments on that, Madam Mayor.
Very good. And then the Rose Garden coming along, and I really appreciate the info on the webpage and the packet. So it's nice, it's getting to be that time of the year when we're starting to see not just the city, but also the businesses starting to clean up and perk up and get ready for our summer tourists. It's really nice to see some vibrancy to town.
Ryan, if I may, the, uh, Village Square part there, the, the Birdtill Street quadrant. Is there a timeframe on that?
Well, they, they've begun the work.
I see it's, last I looked, there was nothing there anymore, so, uh, they, they started planning this week.
I think they're, they're, um, they're gonna try to finish the job by Memorial.
Okay, at the same time.
Yeah, same time.
Yeah, I think Scott addressed that Wednesday.
My alarm clock didn't go off.
Scott's still on the call, if you, Madam Mayor, if you want him to jump in quick.
Scott, anything to add there on the, the park that Mark was chatting about?
At this time, just anxious to see it get done. We turned water on in the parks on Thursday. Cal Lake turns that on. So, uh, we should be able to get irrigation up and running and get our, our new sod and new plantings, uh, healthy. That's all.
Great, thank you, thank you. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Becken?
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, is it a voice? Oh, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No, okay, good job, thank you.